Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to Albany City Council meeting, Wednesday, September tenth, twenty twenty-five at six P. M. I will now call the meeting to order. Would you all please join me in the pledge of allegiance? Thank you. So you're recording me? Roll call, please.
Counselor Van Dremelin.
Present.
Counselor McLeod.
Present.
Counselor Smith.
Here.
Counselor McGee. Counselor Newton.
Present.
Counselor Thompson.
Here.
Mayor Johnson.
Present. Thank you. First, the number three item on your agenda is the adoption of a consent calendar. I believe that there's something that we need to make a correction on.
Yeah, that's correct, Mayor. So we have a correction to three A. One. Staff discovered that there was a change to the term date that needs to be corrected. So the actual term date is six thirty of twenty-nine from six thirty of twenty-eight.
Thank you. Counsel, anybody would like to do anything with this?
Move to adopt the consent calendar as changed.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Thank you. Next, item four, public comment. Public comment is a time for Albany residents to speak and for the counselors to listen. The council won't discuss topics or make decisions during public comment, but will take comments and requests under advisement. Speakers are limited to three minutes and must follow the council's rules and observe the same standards of decorum. If unable to do so, they will be asked to step down and take a seat in the audience for the rest of the meeting. When you get it through the microphone, please give your name and state whether or not you live in the city of Albany, Oregon. First up is Ben Roche via Zoom, and he did submit written testimony. Ben, are you with us? We'll come back to him if he comes on.
I am.
Oh, there you are. Okay, go ahead. Ben?
Yes.
Your three minutes is starting?
Oh, wow. Right at six. Why, thank you. I am here just to speak on behalf of my family and the high cost of gas here in Albany, Oregon. The prices that we are paying at the pump already are really high enough. I think Albany, if it were to get a gas tax, a lot of our citizens would choose to buy gas outside of the city. So I'm hoping that the city of Albany will really strongly consider before they choose to suggest a gas tax to Albany citizens. The people that I've talked to and the surveying that I've done has shown that the vast majority of Oregon's citizens don't want to pay another dime more on gas statewide, and I think Albany residents feel the same way. So I won't take any more of the council's time. I hope that they would read my comments that I've submitted electronically and take that into consideration when it comes to a city or local gas tax. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Next is Angela Conrad. On Zoom.
She's not online, Mayor, so we can go to the next person.
Okay. So we're moving in-house. Amy Merkling. Did I say that correct? Written, she has written testimony submitted on the gas tax? Not present. Cameron Sotlemeyer, Sotlemeyer, written and AMI water meters. Is Cameron here? He did submit written testimonies. Thank you. Kent Wiles, written, submitted written testimony on taxes. Joyce Holbert, excuse me, Hurlbut, she submitted written testimony on the gas tax. And now we'll go to Eileen. When?
Well, thank you very much for allowing us to speak. Thank you also for all that you do for our community. We have great city employees, and one of the programs we have with city employees is neighbors helping neighbors. And a few years ago, I talked to you about the National Day of Service and remembrance for nine eleven. And the idea of that is to bring our community together, to work together, to make our community better. Last year, we helped with schools. We've helped with families in the past. This year, thanks to our great compliance officers and other city employees, we have nine families that we are going to help come this Saturday from nine to noon. We will start at the Albany Police Station for a moment of silence, and Marilyn is going to say a few words. And these neighbors would touch your heart. They have no one to help them. And the city employee goes out first, then they call me, and then I go out. So the, and I talked to all nine of these, and the people, one gentleman had just lost his wife, and so, of course, was very teary-eyed. He'd been caring for her. And then he was very teary-eyed because of the compassion of the compliance officers and how kind they were. And then he made me cry because he couldn't believe that strangers would come and help him. We have nine neighbors. They live right beside us. They live all over town, and they have no one to help. So the Saturday after nine eleven, every year in Albany, we have projects like this where we try to get everyone together. So any help you can give in bringing your family, your friends, Saturday, it is on Just Serve. You can go to JustServe.org, and you can see all nine projects, what things to bring. You could say BlackBerries are us this year because there are a lot of those. And then we have two houses we're painting. So if you like to paint, wear some paint clothes. Otherwise, bring loppers and all of that to help us. But this is just a great opportunity to work together, to make our community even better than it already is. Thank you.
So with that being, Russ had signed up. Would anyone in chambers like to speak to counsel for three minutes?
I didn't see it on here.
Oh, it's on the backside. I'm sorry. Ray Hiltz. Good to see you, Ray.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and counselors. I think I was here probably six months ago complaining about Thirty-Fourth Avenue and the potholes. Well, I don't know if it's a contractor or the Albany Road Department. However, they have filled the potholes. However, they left oh, probably one to two inches of asphalt. So instead of putting it down level of the street, it's a couple inches. I didn't go out and measure it. So as you go out and you're in a left-hand lane, out east, you, when you go across those bumps, so you, instead of hitting a pothole, you're going up over. So I would request, if it's a contractor, that you go back to the contractor and have them put it level with the street. Or if it's our Road Department for Albany, then they need to go out and level it off. I don't know if they'll use a sander or not, but it needs to be done because it's as bad as a potholes. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ray. Now, would anybody in chambers like to speak to the council this afternoon, this evening? What's your name, sir?
Ryan Restiker. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, counsel, for giving me a chance to speak. It's in regards to the fuel tax. I was just wondering if the council was aware of the California refinery situation and how that's going to impact, impact fuel prices here very shortly. People aware of that? There are two major refineries in California that are shutting down, one at the end of the year, one in the first quarter of next year. Those two refineries are not going to be replaced. They, together, they combine, they provide between eighteen and twenty percent of the gas supply for the, for the state of California. And what you can imagine is, is when that happens, they're predicting, looked this up, a lot of, read a lot of articles predicting the cost of gas in California is going to go between eight to ten dollars a gallon. When that happens, you can understand that the fuel supplies here in Oregon are going to migrate towards California. Less fuel in Oregon is going to be in higher fuel prices to begin with. So we have that to deal with. And then on top of that, we're looking at six percent, six tenths from the state, six cents from the city. I just think that's a pretty big ask at this point in time. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next on tonight's agenda is resolutions. Item five is resolutions, exemption from competitive bidding to purchase and install automatic meter reading infrastructure and associated water meter parts and services. Scott LaRocque will be talking to us today.
I don't often bring a prop, so I think this is probably the first time I've been in council with one. It's exciting. So to start, I thought it'd be good to explain to everybody just so they understand like what automatic metering infrastructure is for water systems. Currently, the way we get our water meter reads is through a contractor. They go around town. They read meters, each individual meter once per month. Those meters or reads come in throughout the month as they move through different routes in town. With an automatic meter reading system, you would get those meter reads either on demand or just automatically throughout the day, every single day for your entire system. Provides a lot more information for the billing office. It also means that we'd be able to do things like provide better customer service when there's a leak on the customer side. Typically, when somebody gets, you know, they find out they have a leak on their, on their side of the meter, when they get a really high water bill, and they'll call utility billing, they'll ask, you know, either their staff or distribution staff to go and investigate to see, confirm, like, is there a leak on their side? More times than not, it is. And then until the repair is made, you know, water continues to leak, or we shut them off until their fix can be made or whatever. And then often, you know, an adjustment is requested, you know, from, from the homeowner because, you know, try and save themselves some money. And there's, you know, a fifty percent adjustment that is made for the overage of water that's, you know, above what's typically used. The homeowner has to pay some of that, you know, and then the city will basically just loses the other half of that, you know, revenue, the cost of producing and delivering that water. So the nice thing is when you're getting reads all the time, you'll be able to know and see when somebody's having a leak on their side of the meter. Utility billing or our other staff would be able to contact the homeowner when they see it happen, when they're alerted to it, which would be probably within a day or two, and be able to go to that homeowner and try and, you know, let them know, hey, you probably have a leak on your side of the meter, and get that fixed way before they get a high bill at the end of the month. Albany's been installing and what we would call an AMI ready meter for the past ten-plus years. And it's, it's a meter, it's a census I pearl. And its intent was to install it out in your system. And then when the city decided to convert to AMI, what we'd have to do is just purchase a transmitter that then connects to the top of this meter, and boom, it can start transmitting those reads. Now, the cost of that transmitter is a little bit more expensive than the cost of this meter itself. And even though we've been installing these meters for about ten years, we've just been, as, as meters have worn out, we've been replacing them as we go with this meter. This meter is much larger, though, and it takes up a pretty good footprint. And in the older boxes that we have throughout town, we found it just doesn't fit in the box. So what do we have to do? We have to replace the box. The cost of that box is about four hundred and fifty dollars for the box and the lid. And that's just material costs. It doesn't include our time and effort of going and digging out the old box, setting the new one. Or a lot of times, the meter box is in a sidewalk, and then you're having to remove that, that portion, that, that portion of the sidewalk, set a new box, lay it with gravel, because we can't do concrete. It gets scheduled, and they come back later and lay the, lay the concrete. So even more expensive. Here in the last few years, we started hearing about a, a different type of AMI meter made by CamStrup. Now, the biggest thing you notice is CamStrup's meter is, it's a lot smaller. And the benefit of that is, well, it'll fit in those older boxes. And now you're not having to go through and replace all those meter boxes as you're installing AMI, you know, ready devices out in your system. There's a little antenna I didn't have to bring here. It pokes up about that much. But biggest thing is, it does everything that this does, but it's a lot smaller package. And you also don't have anything, it's trans, ready to transmit already. You don't have to install another transmitter that then attaches to the lid. It's ready to go. What else? So the, the other big benefit is CamStrup also has a leak detection system that is built into their meter as well. That's something that census doesn't offer. Now, what that will do is it will actually listen to the main line that that service line is connected to. And every single one of their meters has this device built into it. So what you end up with is you get a entire network and your leak detection network throughout your water system. Now, that is extremely beneficial when trying to locate leaks out in your system, because leaks are very common in water mains. We have hundreds of miles of pipes that are underground. There'll be little leaks that develop, and usually the ones that we end up getting called about and go out and fix, it's, it's when they're large and they become large enough to surface. Well, even a large water main break won't exactly, it could go underground, too. So the way we calculate water losses, we have to factor in the amount of water leaving the plant versus the amount of water that's metered throughout the system. And that difference is what you would consider your loss. With only getting one meter read per month, you know, throughout town, different times of the month, you have to make some assumptions about how you calculate that. If you had an AMI system, you'd be able to calculate it really easily. You'd get all your reads throughout town just like that, throughout the day, every day. It's going to make, being able to figure out if you've got, you know, your water losses is, you could figure out a more accurate way what your water loss is. You'd be able to dissect water quality issues by knowing where your, where your use is happening at any given time. And, you know, we produce about three billion gallons of water each year. So, you know, our water loss is about nine to ten percent based on how we calculate it. That's actually very good. That's an industry standard. That's what every city aims for, is to be ten percent or less. Well, even if we can find these leaks and reduce it by one percent, that's, that's thirty million gallons of drinking water that wouldn't have to be treated by our plant. It's less wear and tear on your equipment. It's, it's better for, you know, the longevity of your, you know, it's, it's of your, of your plant. It's producing less water, less, you know, less upgrades and expansions needed, you know. You extend the life of what you have. So extremely beneficial. Now, CamStrup has been, been producing water meters for a very long time. They're actually based out of Denmark. But they've started producing water meters in Georgia as well. And most of their water meters, two, two inch or less are made in the U. S. in Georgia. And we, when we found out, we asked these, you know, these guys, like, where, where are these being used? You know, is there a city comparable size nearby that we can go and talk to? And the city of Beaverton did a bid two years ago for, beginning of twenty twenty-four, for an AMI system. City Beaverton's a very comparable sized system. They're, they're just a little bit bigger than us. They also had census water meters throughout their system, and they were partially deployed with the I pearl, just like us. And when they went through and did their bid, CamStrup won the bid very easily, and it was because of the same factors that we have. They weren't going to have to replace all their meter boxes throughout their town. And they are on a quicker timeline than what we were wanting to do this. So they're, you know, they're about halfway through their system already. So they've got thousands of the meters already deployed. So we were able to go meet with them and say, you know, is this product as good as they say it is? Does it send out the, is it, are you able to get the meter reads through the box lids like they say? Is the leak detection system working like they say it is? And all the way across the board, they said absolutely. Only time they've had any, any issue getting a read was when a van was parked over a meter box for an extended period of time. You can expect that. As far as the leak detection, they, they kind of wish that it, they begrudgingly admitted that it was very accurate at detecting leaks. They've been finding all kinds of leaks in their system. The largest leak that they found was eleven gallons a minute. That's about five point eight million gallons of water over a year. That's equivalent to the AM plant reservoir, for perspective, which is our second biggest reservoir in our system. But so, everything looks great. They, they did this process. We had our procurement folks look at their bid. It allowed for piggybacking on their bid. So other government entities could use their procurement process and avoid going through a competitive process themselves. For us, we think this makes sense. Similar sized system, very similar circumstances. We think that we have no reason believe why we would have any different of a result. So the cost of this, it's about six point three million dollars. So it's not insignificant over five years. About three hundred and seventy thousand dollars of that is, is actually equipment that we would be purchasing for the city of Millersburg since we produce, or we provide most of their distribution services. So that money would be reimbursed back to us when Millersburg chose to install this or have us install it for them. We also have started earmarking money for doing a push for AMI last year. So we put about a million dollars in a reserve fund last year to start this. And we have money set aside in our capital budget for the next four years for AMI as well. We also spend about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year replacing meters, so that money would also, out of our operating budget. So that would also go towards this every year as well. So between all of that, we, we have the money budgeted and set aside for this project. That was a whole lot of information. I don't have any other thing else to add unless you guys have questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Counselors, we have questions. Counselor Smith. No, well, Counselor Thompson.
Oh.
No, Counselor you first.
Okay, okay. Can you repeat the amount of money that will come from Millersburg?
About three hundred and seventy thousand dollars.
Question two. Are any of these little meters installed already here?
We installed it, we, we bought about thirty of them just to kind of test out in our system. Now, we, we don't have the, we have to install antennas. There's about three antennas that have to be receiving antennas that have to be installed around town. That's included in this. So we weren't able to actually test them ourselves. We won't be until, but as far as, you know, them working and reading and functioning and fitting in the boxes, we were able to test that out.
Question number three. How long will it take to replace all the meters?
Well, we are hoping to do this in five years. It's, it's a lofty goal. It would be our own crews going out and doing this. If we were to stick with this census meter, there'd be no way we'd be able to do it because of the meter box, you know, requirements. It would cost more money and then just the time they would take. Being able to go through and just, you know, not have to worry about replacing the box is going to be a big time saver. But we're hoping to do this in five years.
Thank you.
Counselor Thompson.
Yeah. So like, how many customers have a leak so bad that it eventually becomes an issue that they?
So I, I actually, I talked to utility billing today to ask them, like, how, how often is this occurring? It's about ten a week, ten calls a week where they get.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's not an insignificant amount. It's a fairly regular call that they get.
Okay. Because, you know, my mind, I'm looking at the six point three million. Now, you have to subtract from that the cost that would occur anyway during that five years. So you're still talking, and just, I wasn't following along that closely, but, you know, you gotta subtract a million or two from that. But you're still talking, you know, four million dollar endeavor. And I, now, ten a week, that's a lot more than I thought. You can see where I was going. This, that, that is a, that's just not a cool thing to have to upgrade. That's a significant.
Right.
Upgrade. So, so thank you. I think that, that helps to capture that big number in my head.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Counselors, Counselor Van Dremelin?
Yeah. As someone who used to replace water meters way back in the day, this is actually really exciting to me. So this, this, this is a really cool upgrade to me. So can you speak to what the cost savings is to the city if we were to discover something like that eleven gallon a minute leak that Beaverton did? Like what, the five point eight million gallons a year, like, what does that equate to? Like, what does that equate to? I, I understand that, like, in resource, resource terms, like, that's significant in and of itself. But there's also a monetary cost to that much water just spilling out of the system. Could, could you speak to that really quickly as well?
So, I tried, I tried to do kind of a calculation. It's a little difficult, but I, I think a good rough number is about $10,000 per million gallons produced.
So, so being able to fix a leak like that is, like, in and of itself financially significant as well? Thank you.
The other counselors? Go ahead, and then I'll go after you.
The water loss averages nine to 10%, you said? Can somebody answer the historical question that I have? When I started working here, I believe the water loss was about 30%. It was hor, while we were dealing with the water system that we bought from Pacific Power and didn't know what was underground when we bought it. If anybody, if Director Bailey?
Let's just say, we have our distribution supervisor here. Mr. Kenny.
I believe it, whoever you talked to, it was between 28 to 30%.
It was, it was, yeah. It was the Public Works Director at the time, so thank you very much.
Counselor Newton? I, as I have a couple of questions. So, how are these units powered? Is there an internal mechanism, battery, or how's it powered?
Yeah, so there's a battery that's inside this thing. This thing is completely sealed, so it's, it's not replaceable, but it is supposed to last. They're, they're, they're warranted up to 20 years. So first, if there's any failure within 10 years, it's fully replaceable. From the night, you know, 11 to 20 years, it's, it's prorated from that, from that point on.
So, you're telling me the useful life of that battery is 20 years? And what's the replacement cost per unit?
This unit, this is a three-quarter inch meter. This is, this is the primary unit that we have throughout our system, that size. It's $319.
It's not more affordable than that behemoth?
It's, I mean, roughly, they're about the same cost for this meter and this transmitter. They're, they're a couple of dollars between the two of them. It's about the same.
But the total is more than the 300 whatever here, right?
No, I, no, this, this is about $319. And between these two combined, the total cost would be about $315, I think.
And so how many meters are we looking at, the entire system, over the five-year period?
Correct.
Can't retire then, as you're telling me.
I have a long time before I can worry about retirement, anyway.
Okay. Now, will, will our technicians be able to do all the work associated with setting those up? Or do we have to bring in somebody outside?
So, the, the antennas will actually be installed by H.D. Fowler. They partner with, with, you know, CamStrup's manufacturer, and they partner with CamStrup to do the antenna installation. The, after that, though, they, included in this is also training for all of our staff and our UB staff with dealing with the software in the system. But yes, after, after some very easy training, which a few of them already got to see kind of what, how to do it, it won't take anything for them to be able to install these and, you know, get them set up to start reporting.
And so the system that's going to collect that data, where's that system essentially located? Is that up there to a treatment plan or?
No, so it's actually, it's, it's sent to, I don't know the exact location off the top of my head. But basically, Cam, CamStrup is the one that collects this information. And then it'll be sent to utility billing throughout the day, every day via Excel file or whatever format they want. But Excel would be the, and then they just import that data into their billing system.
So, so then there's a continuing cost, an ongoing cost?
Yes, yes, there is. The annual subscription fees, it's about $58,000 a year. But that includes all the reporting and the leak detection with it. Yeah.
Yes, Counselor.
So the, the CamStrup has a projected useful lifetime of about 20 years per water meter. Is, is there a material difference between the projected? I, I assume the Census has a similar battery-powered. What, what's the useful lifetime on that? And if you could compare that to, because I, I know from prior knowledge that even traditional water meters that are not, like, they're, they're not remote read, they have a useful lifetime because of the breakdown of the newtating disc. So like, can you compare that to the projected useful lifetime of like a traditional brass meter as well?
I was going to say, Mr. Kenny might be better suited to answer that, but.
It's, it's 20 years.
Yeah.
Brawlum?
A, a, a water meter's 20 years.
Okay. So there's not a material difference in the projected useful lifetime of the remote read meters versus anything else?
These are 20 years in a traditional meter.
Cool.
The warranty is the same.
I thought I was remembering that correctly, but I also didn't want to trust my memory from that long ago.
Yeah. When you talk about batteries, one of the coolest things about these is the large meters. You can replace the battery in a CamStrup.
Oh, okay. Wait.
You don't have to take the entire meter out. In a, in a census meter, a large census meter, when we go to replace that meter, and those are really expensive meters.
It's a lot of labor to replace those. And so you have to, either through, on a, on a large CamStrup meter, you don't have to pull the whole meter out. You could just replace the batteries.
And when you say a large CamStrup meter, like, what size?
Three inches above.
Three inches above, the battery's replaceable?
Right. So that saves us time, energy, effort, all the way around. I mean, we could buy three, three inches above CamStrups and never have to pull them back out.
Yeah.
Just replace the meters.
And a three-inch, three-inch meter's huge.
Yeah, well, try 10 or an eight, so.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, when I was working at Trimble Navigation, we did a project with Badger Meter on gas lines. And I converted a Trimble unit to take their wand, supposedly ride down the street and it would pick up the readings. So this is really interesting technology to me. They would collect it on the Ranger, and then they would send it up, and they'd do their billing like that.
Yep.
Okay, Counsel? Do I have a motion?
I would move to adopt the resolution to do the exemption from competitive bidding to purchase and install automatic metering, infrastructure, AMI, and associated water meter parts and services.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Thank you, Counsel. Thank you, Mr. LaRocque. Thank you, sir. What's your name again, sir?
Jeff Kenny.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next on tonight's agenda, adopt by motion, local fuel tax. Director Bailey, pages 28 and 29 of your packet.
Sorry. Hello. Good evening, Mayor and Counselors. First, a correction. We are not adopting anything by motion. So I think that's maybe part of the confusion that has led to some concern, not asking you to adopt anything. I'm not sure how I missed that, so apologies. I am asking you for input and direction. And so, I have three questions for you, but I have a little bit of background first. So, tonight, we are bringing this item to get firm, but not final, direction from the Council on local fuel tax specifics. So just for clarification, in order to place an item on the ballot, the Council would have to vote to approve a ballot title and direct staff to file it with the county and get it onto the ballot for whichever election you might be thinking of. That is not happening tonight. If the Council wants, that will happen at a future meeting. So far, we have provided 13 presentations to the Council and had discussions on various topics surrounding local street condition and local street funding. Essentially, we've covered information about our current street conditions by street category, current funding amounts, the historic prioritization of arterial and collector streets, and other information which has set the foundation for the Council to consider a local funding mechanism. All of those presentations and information are available on the city's website. And I would really encourage anyone who's interested to go watch fascinating, informative, and humorous slideshow presentations with the City Council. At the end of those discussions, which was about maybe a little over a year ago, the Council directed staff to pursue both the local, local fuel tax and a street maintenance fee with the understanding that, that the Council would consider both, but probably not implement both. But both are viable options, and the Council wanted to see how they sort of shook out. So that's the direction that staff has been working on. The poor condition of our streets, especially our local streets, is at the front of our residents' minds. But what we have learned is that almost no one understands how street maintenance is funded. We've conducted surveys and focus groups. And what we've learned is that once we were able to talk about the current street condition and how streets maintenance is funded, how much money we get, where it comes from and where it does not come from, that we are able to persuade some, but definitely not all, of the people we talked to, that local funding is needed. Some people, but not many, are already decisive about whether they would prefer a fuel tax or a utility charge or nothing at all, even after getting our information. But the vast majority of people in the city don't have enough information to make that decision. Most of the people that we heard from generated some common input. So these are listed on the slide and include, if there were to be a local funding source, they would prefer that the revenue from the local funding would be dedicated for specific projects or specific types of streets. And while we will discuss that with the Council at a later date, the staff has already started working on a draft pavement management plan that would help guide that process. They want the plan available and updated, which we can totally do and would be committed to do. And then there's a request, common request for annual reporting on how much revenue was generated, how it was used, where it was used, and what it did. And that's also not terribly difficult to do. And we have some good examples from other cities of how to provide that information in meaningful ways. So all of those things would happen regardless of the local funding mechanism that went forward. I want to draw a little comparison between the current status of the work on the street maintenance fee rate structure versus local fuel tax options. After review and input from the Council on the street maintenance fee structure last month, that work is essentially complete. We got a couple of small items from the Council to look into regarding how the rate would be structured for the community college and high schools. But basically, we can answer most questions around the street maintenance fee from the community. And we can tell people what they would expect to see on their monthly utility bill depending on the revenue target the Council sets. So in other words, the rate structure is established so that we know the monthly charge for residential, typical residential customers per million dollars of targeted revenue. If the Council wants staff to generate $1 million, we can tell people this is approximately what would appear on your bill. If the staff, if the Council directs staff to try to generate $3 million, we can extrapolate and tell people this is approximately how much would appear on your bill. It's very helpful for people when trying to evaluate the consequences of these decisions. There's other information that we would talk about around a street maintenance fee with the public about advantages and disadvantages of a street maintenance fee. We've talked with Council about these things, who it would affect, why we think everyone should pay one, and even whether you drive or not. And we can talk about that. These are all things that we know and we've talked about with the Council. But having that specificity about your actual financial impact is really helpful. We know from last, our past efforts to pass a local fuel tax, which for those who don't know, there have been several dating back to 1982. Where were you at 1982? And from our current public research, robust information and outreach is critical. We have a lot of information that we can pass on about our current condition and on the structure and impact of a street utility fee. We don't really have that same level of specificity on the local fuel tax. There are a few key pieces of information that staff feels we need from the Council in order to be most effective as we continue on with our outreach, which is ongoing. One question is, how much? We've tossed around several local gas tax rates in pennies per gallon, but have not settled on one or maybe two that the Council would prefer going forward. This information would help us narrow our discussions on financial impacts to a manageable number of things to talk about with people so that they can consider the impact. The second item is when? Scheduling the ballot item for an election has huge consequences on the ability of staff to talk about it. The deadline, there's a deadline regardless of the election. There's a deadline months before the actual election when staff can no longer provide any information or else we face electioneering complaints. So during that period of time, from when the ballot title is approved and sent to the county until the election happens, staff has to be silent and other people will have to carry the water for a local fuel tax, including the Council, any community members that may want to be in support, political action committee, et cetera. So there are people who can talk about it, but staff, who generally are doing a lot of talking, cannot talk in that point, at that point in time. So while I'm asking you to tell us your preferences, these are not final decisions again. Just want to emphasize that. You can tell us, you would like us to take it forth, you know, a certain amount per gallon on a tax. And if we come back and say, everybody hated that, then you can tell us, well, we would like to consider something else. Or if the state actually passes a new transportation bill, we might come back and say, you know what, we don't need that full amount. Now, the Council might consider a local fuel tax at slightly less than what we were previously looking at. These are all things that can be decided later. You don't have, you're not deciding that tonight. We just need some direction because right now, it's, it's, you know, anybody's choice as far as tax rate. So let's start there. Data from our focus groups and community surveys has shown that support for a tax, fuel tax grows with education and understanding of our street maintenance program. The two rates that gathered the most support in our focus groups and surveys were five cents per gallon and 10 cents per gallon, which was a little surprising to us, but that's what came out of those focus groups. Those two rates both came with the caveat from the public participants, though, that they would only support them if the higher amounts meant that more streets would be improved faster. So for sure, people want to see results. The estimate that we have using other cities with fuel taxes and ODOT data on fuel sales in our area is that we would be likely to generate about $400,000 per penny. That is an estimate, so, but that's our best guess at this point. So this table shows some of the common fuel tax rates. Three cents per gallon is the most common local gas tax rate in the state. That would generate about $1.2 million in revenue. Five cents per gallon, $2 million. 10 cents per gallon, $4 million. And I threw on 15 cents per gallon because we've previously discussed with Council a starting revenue target of $6 million per year, even though our identified gap is $12.8 million per year. If we, if you want us to generate $6 million from a local fuel tax, it would have to be set at 15 cents per gallon. And that's, would be the highest in the state by five cents. The current highest fuel tax is 10 cents per gallon.
At Portland?
This is City of Portland. So, I tried to do some math, which is risky for me, and calculate how much this would cost people per car per year. So if you drive 12,000 miles in a year and your car gets 20 miles to the gallon, I have some annual costs per car. some annual costs per car presented here. If you are a household with more than one car, you just multiply to try to estimate how much this would impact you. Now, I'll tell you that one of the concerns with a local fuel tax is that this is how much it costs no matter the income of your household. There's no way to give a discount for low-income households. So that's one of the challenges with a local fuel tax is that it's a regressive tax. Doesn't matter how much you make, you still have to pay the same amount. So this is the type of information we want to be able to present to people, but four numbers is too many. So we would like direction on one or two fuel tax rates that the council would like us to use for our ongoing outreach efforts. And I'm willing to stop and hear if you have any questions or want to discuss it or throw out numbers now, or I can wait to the end if you want to think about this some more.
Counsel?
What about splitting the baby with five and 10 and going seven and a half? And anything is possible. I don't know. How do people feel about that?
Well, I'm, I go to Portland to visit my daughter in business, and I, I see the bill. I pay 10%, 10 cent every time I buy. I put 50 gallons, or $50 at a time in my car. So 10 cents seems high for this area. I think three to five would work for me, but again, I don't have a vote until it's a tie, so.
Yeah, I, for all just discussing, I, I, yeah, I was weighing between five and 10, not really wanting to go 10. So 7.5 seems like a good compromise point to me.
And for folks watching at home, this has to go on the ballot. You have to vote for it. This is something that's automatically implemented.
We're not making, yeah, we don't make.
We aren't making that decision. Just to make sure people understand that as well.
Yeah, so this will be a message. We'll go out, we'll talk to people, and we'll say, if it's seven and a half cents, this is how much you could expect to pay. And you can take that estimate and do the math in your head based on your car that gets nine miles to the gallon or whatever you want to do. But it's helpful to have a number to talk about. Lots of things could change between now and whenever this would come back to the council for a final vote on a ballot title.
I'd like to hear from the rest of the council. Counsel McLeod.
Thank you. If we are only choosing two to discuss with, with residents, I, I would probably like to hear the seven and a half, like Counselor Newton suggested. I think that's, that's a good number. And then I would also like to hear from residents about the 10 cent figure. So if we're only choosing two, those are the two that I would, I would like to hear, hear about. If we're, if we're choosing three, I would, I would add the five cent in there as well. Thank you.
Counsel Roger Moore.
Yeah. So Director Bailey, thank you very much for bringing all of this to the council again and putting the figures in front of us again. My thoughts on the matter are, like this, like this is complicated and we have to do something. Like our streets, like our streets are a mess and continuing to not do anything about this and raise more revenue to fix them, like for me, like that's, that's a number one. Like that's my primary consideration. I want this to go on the ballot, and I want this to be something that is palatable to the voters when we put it on the ballot. Would I love to raise, you know, six, 10, $12 million a year and, you know, meet our revenue targets and fix all the streets? Absolutely. I want to be pragmatic about it, though. And when I look at the fact that Albany's been trying to pass a local fuel tax longer than I've been alive, the, the where, where were you in 1982 really hit home. I wasn't here yet, just to, to out myself as, as a younger person on the council. But I, I think that that's significant. And I think that it's also significant that I or anyone else in this state can go on the ODOT website and look at the table of who has local fuel taxes, what cities, what counties, what, you know, what have you, whatever taxing jurisdiction we're talking about. And Portland is the only one that's got a 10 cent a gallon fuel tax. Typically, we're looking at, you know, somewhere between two and five cents per gallon. You know, you look at places around in the area, Newport has a local fuel tax. You look at some other municipalities. It's, most of them aren't over five cents a gallon, and voters can see that. I don't think, as much as the revenue target is attractive, I don't think that 10 cents a gallon or really over five cents a gallon is going to pass the sniff test with, with Albany voters, especially in light of the fact that I know it hasn't passed. People will be quick to point out that the transportation package is still very much up in the air, but what's on the table at the state level is an additional six cents a gallon gas tax, and that's not going to be lost on Albany residents either now or in the future. Like people are, people are going to look at that and remember. And so I think when we're talking about, you know, 10 cents a gallon, past muster in the focus group, that's great, but we have to take a look at that holistically when the state's also considering a six cents a gallon fuel tax. And so if we tack on then, you know, an additional five cents, I mean, we're looking at 11 cents. We're looking at in totality, something around what the focus group found was palatable. But if we go beyond that, we really are, even though the, the state transportation package is not our decision, that's going to get made by the legislature. When we talk about what is possible and what will be palatable to voters in this area, it behooves us to take that into account. And I think that another failed attempt to pass a local fuel tax will do more harm than good. It erodes trust, excuse me, from the community. I, I don't think that it's in our best interest to look at something that, that truly just may not be palatable for voters in this area at this time. And so what I would be, what I would want to support is looking at either a three cent a gallon or a five cent a gallon local fuel tax. I think that, again, we have to do something. This raises a certain amount of revenue. We may have to take a multi-pronged approach, depending on what happens with the state shared revenue. But I, I think that the five cent per gallon local fuel tax, looking at the total picture, really kind of would return our most bang for the buck right now, because I, I do think that making this accountable to a decision of the voters is important. Like that's important to me. But if we put something on the ballot that's just not something that folks are going to say yes to, that's not going to be, that's not going to be helpful. I also think that in terms of election timing to, you know, start to address the second question.
Oh, we're not there yet.
Okay, cool. If you want me to hold my thoughts on that, that's great. Yeah, okay, cool, 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 no problem.
So Counsel Smith, do you have anything?
I've expressed my opinions about fuel tax in the past, and those opinions have not changed. I look at the state figures. The fuel tax is going down year after year, which is one reason that the legislature's considering a 6% increase. I'm not optimistic about it, and I, but I'm clearly in the minority. There are four, at least four votes to do something other than what I think is the right thing to do. So I don't think I'm going to weigh in. If, if I was going to, and it was a perfect world, and we had no other financial considerations to anything else in the budget or the community, I'd say 10 cents. But I'm, I'm, I have, I have no hope of getting that up anywhere.
Counsel McGee.
Can you go back to the previous slide, Chris, for a second? And lots of caveats on that annual cost. If you're, if you drive more or less miles, your car gets more or less gallon, you know, lots of caveats there, so.
I'm, I'm inclined to be in agreement with Counselor Van Dremelin around the three or five, just because we have that state transportation tax that's kind of in the air. I am concerned about that, and just hearing from people, it, you know, I am concerned about looking at things holistically. So yeah, thank you. I wanted to see this again.
Counsel McLeod. So just to, just to clarify, this is, we're talking about a conversation that we're going to have with the community. Is that, is that correct?
Right.
And what we want to try to give them, we're trying to find parameters of, would you, would you pay this little or would you pay this much? Is that, is that correct?
Yeah. I mean, we are, so the strategy is first, we try to educate and get people up on the same level of understanding of why we're even having this conversation. And then this would be used to say, okay, what, what would it mean to you if, if it were a 10 cents a gallon fuel tax? What would it mean to you if it were a three cent a gallon gas tax? That's what we're trying to suss out here.
So I think that for too many years, our city has not had the ability to fund road maintenance for the, the roads that need to be repaired. And we're seeing the results of that now. And it's going to take a lot to be able to play catch-up from that. And so I think that's why we need to try to have a, a conversation with the community about a larger figure and tell them, if you want these roads repaired, if you want the road in front of your house fixed, it's going to cost money, and this is what it's going to cost, and this is what it's going to mean to you. And so I think if we, if we really need to get these streets repaired, which we do, we need to talk about the actual number of what that's going to cost. And so that's why I think we need to have this conversation with the community about the larger figures to actually be able to get this job done. So that's, that's why I'm, I'm leaning towards the, the larger figures, because we have to remember that the end goal is fixing these streets. It's going to cost money. This is what it's going to cost, and this is, this is what we need. So that's, that's why I'm leaning towards the, the larger numbers. Thank you.
Counsel Newton, do you have anything?
Nothing in addition to what I shared previously. The seven and a half.
Seven and a half.
Seven and a half. So seven and a half and 10, or five and seven and a half?
Five and seven and a half.
And you're three and five? Okay, Chris?
I, I do have a quick question, and I'm sure that the answer to this is yes, but I want to make sure. The revenue target figures on this slide, those take into account both Albany and out-of-town drivers that tend to, for lack of a more technical term, fill up in Albany.
Right.
Over that given year.
Yeah, so the, the $400,000 per penny number comes from data on total fuel sales in Albany that we've been able to analyze. So no matter where they're coming from, people are buying a certain quantity of fuel here. We sort of extrapolate some numbers and calculate $400,000 per penny, regardless of where they're coming from.
Perfect, thank you. And, and as a, a city right on I-5.
Sure.
Like I think it behooves us to remember that, you know, this is a place where people can easily stop and fuel up. People visit here. People come through on their way to the coast and, and many other places. I mean, Highway 20 and 34 and I-5 all meet here. And it's, it's not lost on me that the fuel tax, like, and part of why I like it is it's, it captures more of who drives through our community than, than just the street maintenance fee, which falls solely on, on Albany residents. So thank you.
Okay.
So Counsel Thompson, I haven't heard from you yet. Have we?
Well, earlier I, I had focused on the 7.5 as, as a midpoint between five and 10. But now that you ask, I, I do have some thoughts, and I just think we're, we need to reiterate, we're in a bad situation because this has been, I mean, not just ignored, you know, saying the phrase "kick the can," I don't think really that too many councils refused, refused to tackle this just for the sake of not tackling it. And you see some of the messages we got from people when they thought we might be putting, putting this on the ballot today. Just the idea of putting on the ballot becomes a debate in and of itself. I mean, it's gobsmacking. And so the, the sense of what the, the problem is in the streets is, I just don't think that's being the problem of how far behind we are, it's just not being addressed. And, and I don't, having said that, I don't think we're ever going to get to a point where we're doing 12 million a year to catch up. I just think we need to start significantly tackling, tackling this problem, and if we don't, we don't. But I'm not afraid of putting on a, a significant number, because the mountain, I feel like, I feel like a period of engagement with the city is only, in the community, is only going to reiterate to the folks we already know by the opinion work done by, I forget their name, the consultants, that we had. They're very quality people. And I think we see who's going to be proven, and I think those folks will still be in favor, and I think the negatives will still be negative for the most part. I just don't think, I think you'd have to spend a lot of money in a marketing way to change. I don't think a number is going to change that too much. So, and there's some value. And I also, to talk about trust with the voters, I think we got to go with one way or the other. I think the idea of a gas tax followed by a street utility fee, I think that would be a bad idea, and I'm absolutely against that. I think we got to do one or the other. There you go.
Okay.
Okay, Steph, Counsel Newton.
So, great points, Counselor Thompson. And that's also why I am leaning more towards the higher end with five cents, seven and a half cents versus three cents, because if we want to actually be able to show, hey, we're getting some shit done with this money, you're, sorry, there's some stuff done, your roads are getting fixed. We can't do much when we have three cents per gallon. You know, there are some roads, and roads are huge for like tourism, for being proud of your neighborhood or of driving, driving through town, as much as my children find it quite fun to go down Third Avenue Southeast and feel like they're on a Disneyland ride. It's, I think that we need to, and I, I agree, Counselor Thompson, how you said that the folks that are going to be in, in favor of this are going to be in favor of this, whether it's, you know, five cents, seven and a half cents. Personally, I don't want to Portland by Albany and have a 10 cent gas. I'm just going to put that out there. No offense. But I, I think that we need to be able to communicate, hey, if we get this amount, seven and a half, seven and a half, 7.5 cents or five cents, this is the work that we're going to get done. This is, this, these are the changes you're going to see. And I think that we're going to get a lot of buy-in. That is, roads are one of the number one issues that we hear about. And this has been, you know, kicked down the, kicked, kicked down the road since before Counselor Van Dremelin and I were, were born. So, and, and Counsel McGee.
I was a junior in high school.
Yeah, and, yeah.
And I'm 60, so.
Okay, so coalescing that, I think what we have is five cents and seven and a half cents. And part of what we will be asking people is like, you know, would you support five cents? No. Would you support three cents? You know, so it'll still be part of the discussion. To Counselor Van Dremelin's point, first of all, there's no wrong answer. Okay? So there are lots of considerations with this. And, you know, we do not want to be unsuccessful again. So several of us have gone through an unsuccessful fuel tax measure, and then you're burned for a while, and, and the problem just gets worse. So that is a valid point. Also, if we get too little revenue, we will not be able to do enough, and people will think, well, what the, what was the point of that? So that is a very big concern in staff's mind, is if we don't get enough revenue, how will we demonstrate that we're actually making a difference? So all of these things are good points, and if it were easy, it would already have been done. So this is a hard discussion. I just want to acknowledge that. Okay, we're going to go with five and seven and a half.
Is that five and seven and a half, counsel?
And we'll see what happens.
Counsel, five and seven and a half, please.
I have a quick, I have a quick question.
Ma'am.
When you do the focus groups or the surveys, are these multiple choices? Do people get a chance to talk more, get qualitative data with that, too, or is it just kind of quantitative?
So. So, um, right now, we're not planning to do another focus group type thing. The focus group effort, we did two sets of two focus groups. And those were multiple hours, direct one-on-one conversations. You know, there was a lot of back and forth. The surveys were like you, some of you may have received the survey where it was really multiple choice, and they probably didn't send it to you because you know too much.
I, I didn't get it either.
Yeah, they, they tend to not send it to you because you know everything.
But my clients brought it to me.
Yeah, so, um, this is really, our effort, um, is going to be trying to have like small meetings and small groups to try to get out into neighborhoods and get to people. We've done some small, uh, groups already. And it is more of a conversation depending on the time limit that we have. So we are trying to both educate and then also try to get a sense of what people might support. It's a big lift.
Been incentivized for participants?
We have not discussed that specifically. That is what the focus groups did. They do pay, I mean, when you're doing surveying now, you do have to pay people for their time. We will see how we do, I think. So, okay, moving on. Second question. Okay. When do you want us to, when, what election do you want to target? Again, there are three obvious options. It's really important for us to understand this because we need to work backwards from these dates to try to get as much work done as we can. The first option that I, was presented was a special election in March. In addition to having to pay the full cost of a special election, that date, um, for the ballot title to go to the county is December 19th, which is practically tomorrow. So that's one consideration. The May election in 2026, the date for the ballot title to go to the county would be February 27th. And then next November's election, not this election, but in one year from now, the ballot title will go in August. So obviously, that one gives us the longest lead time while still trying to get this done in 2026. But, um, any election is possible. And so when would you like this to happen?
Council?
Yes, ma'am.
So, Councilor Mc, Ms. Smith was the first one to click.
Thank you. I like the, um, the farthest out for two reasons. One, the education campaign, and more immediately, the consequences of the, um, special session that's underway right now. The Republican majority has promised to put any tax measure on, any tax increase on the ballot for voters. That would, and the two things that are on there that I know of, that I can think of immediately are the, the state fuel tax increase and the payroll tax. So whenever they, whatever election they're going to put that on the ballot, I think it would be sooner rather than later. And we would have a better chance of any measure that we wanted, um, in November. Greater voter turnout, for one thing. Probably more money measures in competition, but not probably the state tax increases.
The councilors?
I was going to ask if we could do May 18th, 2027. Because then, following Councilor Smith's reasoning, if I recall correctly, I think that the, I believe it was Representative Drayson, they did want to put this on a ballot. I think that it might be conflicting and coming up on the November 2026. And I think, I think that is what they will end up targeting. That, that, just my two cents there.
The councilors?
Yeah, I, you know, May 27th, the, the consultants were clear. The May and November of the even year is a highly partisan time, and it's our worst chance, based on their modeling, for success. And so anything other than that is what I'm in favor of. And I believe we'd have to pay for it, just like March. I believe that August is a ballot access time. Once again, we'd have to pay for it, though. But, yeah, I, I just staying away from May and November of the even year.
Councilor Van Dremelin, I see your look of confusion. This is from a prior presentation. The, uh, even years that were presented by the consultants, that those were more highly partisan and less likely to pass the gas tax.
Because what I remember from the consultant presentation, I'm, I'm familiar with what you're talking about.
I wasn't sure if you were, you were with us.
Yeah, I, I'm familiar with what you were talking about. But my, my read on that was that the larger the electoral turnout, the less partisan it tended to be, and the general elections tend to be the larger voter turnout. And so like the November general election would be a larger number of voters, and so it would be less politically polarized.
Yeah, yes, the November would be better. May would be the worst. May of the even year would be the worst time by the consultants. November would be better, but it's still not as good as, um, they were suggesting, not, not suggesting, suggest, but they said, heck, if you did November of 2025, that would be a great time. November of the odd year.
That's too soon.
Yeah, no, I understand, yeah, I agree, I agree. But in, in the ranking of them, May of the even year is the worst. But November of the even year is also pretty bad.
So, if I, if I may.
Please.
My, my thought on this, it, the, I, I hadn't even considered the May of, of 2027. That's an interesting idea. But I, I think that my preference would still swing towards the November, uh, 2026 ballot because of the larger electoral mix for a, a November general election. And to me, what is most significant of these dates on this slide is actually the second two columns, like the, the ballot title, the county, and the council vote. And because that's, that's how long city staff have to conduct an education campaign on what this means, um, you know, what, what the impacts are. And, and yes, other organizations in the community, folks on the council who support this should absolutely be carrying this forward after that date. However, that's a huge resource that then after that date
We don't have.
we don't have. And so August of 20, of next year, I mean, the, the March special election for me is kind of a non-starter for a number of reasons, not the least of which we'd have to pay for the full cost of the special election. December does feel right around the corner. February doesn't feel all that much better than December, to me. Um, I think August gives us a good opportunity to put the information that we want to put out into the community, and then the voters get to do what they want to do with that information.
And their research and conversations with us.
Absolutely.
So Councilor McGee?
Yeah, I'm with the November. When I first saw it, it was a no-brainer.
Councilor Smith, November?
I still feel that, um, issue that we may of 2027, which would also give us more ample time. It's just six months after the November. I feel that we would have, would, I feel like that's a better option based on what we've learned from the consultants. My second pick would actually be the March of 2026. I think it is, I understand the, the timeline, that would be my, my second choice. But I, I find that, I feel that I'm, the May of 2027 would be the option I would choose.
Councilor McLeod?
Thank you. I, I don't want us to pay for the, for the March election. I think we're, we're trying to get money to fix the streets. We shouldn't be spending even more money to be able to do that. That would not be fiscally responsible. I also think that, um, the, the May election is too soon, like others have said. So I'm also torn between, uh, November 20, of 26 and, um, what did you say? May of 27? May of 2027? I, I like both of those dates. I, I think that does give us enough time to do some community outreach, some community education, not pay for the election, and, uh, still have, still have that time to be able, to be able to engage with the community, hear their input. And, um, so I would go with November or May of, of the following year.
Else to just keep in mind, as staff would not be able to do anything in relation to the campaign, it will be up to members of the council to manage the campaign for the gas tax.
Well, I think that's understood.
Yes. I will just say, I will not have the capacity to do that, to manage the gas campaign, as I did with, uh, um, the levy. I want to be very explicit, I will not have the capacity to do that if it were on the November 2026 election.
Because you have to run a campaign too. So, yeah, you too.
Well, I also think that, um, thank you, Councilor Newton, for acknowledging that. And at the same token, we're sitting councilors now, so we have to do our jobs. That's why we were elected. We have the balance, and so we will just have to figure it out and make it happen. I want the greatest voter turnout. May 2027 just seems so far. I don't want people to forget, you know, um, folks' attention spans are short. And if we can educate, implement, and move on, I think it's the better option. I don't want it to go in the back of people's minds, and it feels like something new versus something that we've been working on. That's my concern about waiting for, for May. But I, I do understand what you're coming from, trust me.
So it's only six months after the November, and I find that it would give us more time. I, the people are going to remember, every pothole they run over, they're going to remember how bad our roads are. And they're going to remember that they want to have solutions.
Well, people didn't really remember because they got, we got testimony of people thinking we was doing stuff today. So I think it was some confusion.
I think that folks just don't understand the
That too.
the process. And this would give us more time to be able to educate folks on this process and what the money would be able to do and accomplish.
So I, I, so I, I'm looking at this, and I'm saying to myself, three or four of us on the dais will be running for office again as well. But I think the 2026 November election, as Councilor Van Dremelin so eloquently stated, it's the biggest voter turnout, and we have an opportunity to get it in front of folks all year, because staff is done in Au, in August. And we have to do our part as far as, and we've talked about this, pushing it down the road, we don't want to do that. So November 26 makes the most sense for the education component. Makes the most sense with community outreach, community meetings. It makes the most sense to do it then. And then the next year, we'll worry about something else.
If I could just offer, there will be opportunities for staff and council to discuss how things are going between now and next August. And so if it turns out that something happens in the councils, like, you know what? November doesn't look like a great idea anymore, let's push it to next May. That can happen. The, the thing we were trying to avoid was, uh, having to stop talking in December. So the further away the date is, is fine. And you will be hearing from staff ad nauseam between now and next August. And so if you ever want to change, again, this is not a final decision. If you're like, this is, November isn't great, let's postpone it. You can definitely make that decision then as well.
But it's because the council, we still can be out doing community readings, community outreach.
Sure.
Those kinds of things.
And listen, I am all for getting it done. This has taken longer than I wanted to do to begin with, has been doing this since 2023. So, but it is up to the council. If, you know, just to Councilor Newton's point, it sounds like consensus is mostly around November of next year. But the council obviously can change their mind if they want to.
Yeah, we have until August of 26, right?
Right, yep, okay, so I want to move along. One of the things that we heard, um, a lot was, um, an option, a discussion around option to sunset or expire the local fuel tax. And, um, in the public opinion research that we conducted, a lot, about 65% of people, that preferred a fuel tax, preferred that it would, uh, sunset after five years. So that can be written into the ballot title. And then it would be sort of similar to the public safety levy, that it would have to be put up for renewal if the council wanted to do that every five years or at whatever interval you choose. So, sort of to Councilor Van Dremelin's point earlier, this is one of the things that you can add into the ballot title when the time comes to try to make it more palatable for some or at least a decent number of the people who might consider voting for a fuel tax. It does make it more difficult to manage the program. It's really hard to plan for 40 years of capital improvements if you're every five years wondering if you're going to have the money. So, um, that's one thing to consider. The other thing is, if the dollar, the cents per gallon number is low, and if it sunsets so that in four and a half years from now, we're having to go back out for another ballot measure, will we have generated enough revenue to make any kind of meaningful progress so that the community will again support voting for a local fuel tax? That's a big concern in my mind. People want to see progress. Would we be able to generate enough progress to make a difference? So there are pros and cons. And we can, you can tell us now whether or not you like the sunsetting option. If so, at what year? And, um, if you don't like it, then we won't necessarily advertise it as an option.
Councilor Van Dremelin?
I got a lot of opinions tonight.
That's okay, it's our year.
So, conceptually, when I first started educating myself about local fuel tax, the sunsetting sounds, like, it sounds nice, right? But then you look at the fact that there is 40 years worth of revenue need. And all of a sudden, five years seems pretty darn short. The, the five-year suggestion from the, from the consultant, you know, that, that did increase some support. I think being honest with our community, like, if we do, if we do a five-year sunset, we're going to be back in five years asking them to renew it.
That's a fact.
I think, I think doing a short sunset like five years, um, feels to me disingenuous. Like, if we were to do a sunset, I wouldn't want to do any shorter sunset than 10 years. Quite honestly, 40 years, though, sound, like, that, that, that's perpetual. Like, that, that, that may as well be perpetual. And that's to get streets in fair condition and keep them there. And that's if we're able to meet the whole $12 million revenue target, which, at the fuel tax rate that we just said that we were going to target tonight, that doesn't get us there. So, I would say that if we're going to write a sunset into this, it needs to be a, it needs to be a pretty long period.
I don't think we should.
Or it just needs to be, because we can, I mean, it, correct me if I'm wrong here, but like, if at some point in the future, we don't need this revenue, we can repeal this thing, right? Like, that's
Yes.
Yes, that's true.
We have the power to do that. So if we don't need the revenue, we should repeal it in the future, not, not rely on, well, it's going to sunset in five years. Voters can tell us whether they like it or not. Well, in five years, how many streets are we actually going to get repaired with the revenue that we're going to raise?
And how many are going to be getting worse?
Yeah, and how many are going to be getting worse? You know, it depends on what part of town you're in. I, I, honestly, I, I, I would be in support of, of just making this permanent until revoked.
Councilor McLeod?
Thank you. In years past, we've asked councils to, to do this gas tax, and they have decided not to do the hard work. And they've kicked it down, down the road. And I think that now we're, we're being shouldered with that burden. And what I would like to do is, uh, do a service to future councils by not asking them to, to have to have another gas tax if one sunsets. Let's, let's give them the opportunity to repeal a tax, not impose another one. And so that's why I'm in favor of no sunset. Thank you.
I, I think that's pretty, are you feeling about it? Councilor Newton?
I think it's always great to get buy-in. I really believe in the power of democracy and voting. Personally, I think that if folks are seeing the results, they'll renew it, just like how they have renewed our levy for, uh, police and fire. I'm, I'm, I'm feeling some sort of way about it, I'm not, not sure. I really, really am a fan of residents having that, that, that buy-in, that ownership.
Counselor McGee?
I feel like five years is short. I just feel like to Councilor McLeod's point, we're going to ask them to do it again and may not get done or something like that. But I am also torn with Councilor Newton about having voters have the ownership of it. Hmm, didn't you know? I'm gonna, I'm gonna go with not sunsetting.
Counselor Thompson?
Yeah, it, it's, it's a, it's a difficult question, but I come down to the idea of, of making the decision and, and not tying the hands of a future council to re-up that decision. And so it's not a hard and fast thing, but I'm, I'm leaning towards no, no sunset.
I would say, um, no sunset as well. Based on a couple of things, Councilor Van Dremelin said about, it depends on what part of town you're in, how strongly you're affected by this. If you look at the 40-year, it's all going to be this way. Yeah, yeah, yeah. And I'm also thinking of how long it's going to take to collect meaningful, a meaningful balance in that account at $400,000 per penny over five years. There, there will not be many, much of a result that we can accomplish in that period of time. Certainly not with Marilyn Smith contributing to the gas tax. I've been doing some math my own during the presentation. My car is seven years old. I get maybe 22 miles to the gallon. I drive 3,000 miles a year. Nobody's getting rich off of me if they're trying to patch streets with, with the money. So I know I'm not the only one. I'm, no sunset.
So with me, I have dropped a 2006 BMW, and it leaks like a sieve sometimes and it doesn't. Um, I get about 18 miles per gallon, and so, but I put about 30,000 miles on my car a year because of my business and because of other things that I'm doing. Visiting my grandkids, going to Portland and stuff. I think the councillors that want the other councils to repeal in the future, I think that's more palatable to, to them. And also, the citizens say they're taking away a tax. I, I think we'd be no repeal as well. No sunset, excuse me.
Okay. Thank you all. This is probably one of the most deep and meaningful conversations we've had about trying to figure out local street funding since I've worked here. And, um, you know, I know it's not easy. So thank you for your input. We're going to go off and do some work. We already did that. So I'm just going to wrap up where I started, which is, this is not a decision to put a gas tax on the ballot. This is not a decision to implement a gas tax. That has to be decided by the voters. And you will be hearing back from staff multiple times between now and next August at the earliest so that you can hear what we're, we're hearing from the public, and that will probably shape future discussions around local fuel tax. And if that's the direction the council wants to go, how to shape that in the future. But I do appreciate all of your comments and thought. It's not easy, and I appreciate that. Thank you, Mayor.
Director, thank you very much for your time today. Your presentation was fantastic, and we appreciate the hard work you and your staff do on our behalf.
Thank you.
And our community.
Trying to get out of here.
Next on tonight's agenda is business from the council. I'll start with, uh, Councilor Van Dremelin.
I, I don't know that I have anything to add tonight.
No, no vacation stories or nothing?
No, it's not vacation updates from the council, but the trip to San Diego was great. Thanks for asking.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor McGee, or Counselor McLeod?
Thank you, sir. Um, the Albany Public Library has a new display up for summer reading for their bookmark contest. They have a first printing available of all the entries and winners, and more will be produced throughout the year. My daughter and I enjoyed submitting entries for this, and I was delighted that one of my entries was chosen as a winner. That was, that was this one, and these were the, the other two that the two of us created. So make sure you stop by the library to get some free bookmarks that were created by members of our community. Also at the Albany Public Library is the craft supply swap this Friday and Saturday. It's a way to refresh your craft supplies without spending a dime. So make sure you check that out. I also had multiple constituent contacts the last two weeks. A resident contacted me regarding the feral cat population in Albany, looking for resources and information. I was also contacted again regarding the Periwinkle Bike Path and would like to thank the Albany Police Department for their attention and response to those areas of concern. I also spoke with Rebecca Bond of the Albany Visitors Association regarding the possibility of getting an ADA accessible door installed at the train station, and staff is looking into this. And then I was contacted regarding a donation of a washer and dryer for Sunrise Elementary School. Oh, I just lost my notes. Excuse me. Washer and dryer for Sunrise Elementary School. I was able to connect the school staff member with a couple places that would take donation requests, and she has submitted letters to them. I was heartbroken to hear about the school shooting today at Evergreen High School in Colorado. That's the same school that my husband attended. It's a painful reminder of how much our communities need strong support systems, mental health care, youth programs, and safe spaces for our kids to grow and thrive. My heart is with the Evergreen community today. Lastly, tomorrow is 9/11. This year and every year, I remember Nicole Carol Miller, who died as a passenger aboard United Airlines Flight 93 outside Shanksville, Pennsylvania. I encourage anyone interested, especially the younger generation, to research some of the people who died on September 11, 2001. Learn who they were, what they did, and how their deaths changed our world that day. May we never forget their sacrifice. Thank you.
Counselor Newton?
I don't have anything to share today, except I guess maybe happy birthday to my daughter if she's watching this.
Oh, that's fine. Happy birthday. Counselor Thompson?
Uh, no, I don't, I don't have anything. Though I do have a question. Uh, our last meeting, we were close, we didn't have the whole council here on the flashing lights in North Albany.
I'll bring that up.
Okay, very good.
Counselor Smith?
I wish everybody in this room, and indeed the city of Albany, had been at the History Bites, um, presentation at the library. I meant the Regional Museum today. Matt Bennett gave an update on the, uh, project to remodel the Oregon Electric Railroad Building, uh, where he is moving his restaurant. And the, the history of that entire project and the building, it was fascinating. He's a great speaker. And it would, he would have answered every question that anybody has ever asked about what's going on, when are they moving, what's it going to look like? It was just a super presentation and a big crowd. And as a preview for next month's History Bites at the museum, Oscar Halt is going to present information about embalming methods during the Civil War. So, um, but it's, you know, it's October, Halloween. Look forward to that. I don't have anything further.
Thank you, Counselor McGee.
Uh, just two things. One, a constituent contacted me regarding the incident of his 12-year-old stepdaughter being, I guess, approached by some of our Home Challenge people by Periwinkle Park. Grateful to APD for looking into that, as well as our city manager for following up with the constituent. And today got an opportunity, I don't want to steal your thunder, to attend the groundbreaking for our veterans housing that is opening and upcoming in Ward 3 by Timberland Park. With Counselor Smith and Mayor Alex and Peter. So it was a really good event. I'm very happy that we are going to be honoring our veterans in that way. They will have some place to live and call home and have some stability, which is really important. And school's still out for me, but it's coming back very soon.
So, um, as Counselor McGee mentioned, we had the groundbreaking for the, uh, a place called Home, 38 units for veterans housing for the Y Veterans Housing Board. And, um, as a member of that board, we are, we've collected about, we gained about $16 million to do that. The land's paid for. We're excited about it because the community's behind it, organizations are behind it, and it's for, for disabled and, uh, low-income veterans. So our goal is to have it open by, uh, end of '26 to get people moved in. So we're out talking to folks about it. It was nice to meet with, uh, Director, Executive Director Andrea Belford, Housing Community Services, and she would like to come and visit with Albany with us. So I've been setting up a tour with her to take her on the mayor's tour around town. The, the cats, people have reached out to me as well. Thank you for taking that on. I got my, handed to me like 2020 over the cats. And then other than that, we have the Festival Latina coming up this Sunday at Montez Park. And then the Mushroom Festival will be September 21st out at Timberland. And I'm excited about that. At the end of this month, we'll have Legal Orange City's 100th Celebration up in, uh, conference up in Portland. And with that, I'll turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, as Counselor Thompson alluded to at the last meeting, staff had clarified that the signage on North Albany Road in front of the automated enforcement is compliant with state law and presented it on the issue of flashing lights. There was a recommendation from staff that council provide direction to, to us to install those beacons. Counselor Smith made that motion. And while the city attorney and I feel that Counselor McLeod does not need to recuse herself, that is a personal decision that a councillor can make. So she, she did recuse herself, so there was not enough, and Counselor Smith withdrew her motion. Since then, the staff have met with the contractor that provides, uh, this, this capability. It's certainly technically feasible, and, um, this evening, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to provide the opportunity, if you're, uh, amenable to it, to, uh, take up that issue again and maybe entertain a motion in that direction.
I'm so excited about this.
Okay.
That's great.
Counselor Smith?
I'll make the, the motion that I withdrew two weeks ago to install the flashing lights in the school zone on North Albany Road.
I'll second.
Okay, seven seconds? All those, uh, they have a second, you have a second? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
You know? Thank you, council.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, the, uh, the other, only other thing I have for you is, uh, at the last meeting, I believe it was the last meeting, uh, there was, uh, a motion to talk about an ordinance or to have staff come back about an ordinance, uh, with respect to diversion. So September Ridgeway is here to try to get a little bit more clarity from, uh, the council about what their, what your intent is. And I would like to draw your attention first to our contract with the judge, which, uh, does have an independence clause, which says that the city shall have no right or responsibilities to control or influence the manner in which Meyer carries out her judicial responsibilities. So there is a certain amount of independence that is inherent in her position. However, the council has, uh, every right to create an ordinance. But before we, uh, do something like that, we would, I'll turn it over to, to September to talk you through what it is exactly that you're seeking, because we'll have to then put that together in an ordinance and come back to you with, with some more amplifying information.
Good evening, council. Um, as City Manager Trudson said, I am here tonight to have a follow-up discussion about, um, your wanting to update or possibly change our diversion program for traffic violations. Tonight, I just kind of want to get an idea of, um, what your goals are, what you want to accomplish with the diversion program, what, what the end result, uh, you want is. And I will be taking a lot of notes during this. Um, I might ask follow-up questions, so be patient with me. But, um, I'll turn it over to you guys to kind of give some feedback.
I'm going to go Counselor McLeod and Counselor Newton.
Thank you. Over the last few months, we've heard from members of the public during public comment about how they received a ticket at the, at the red light and speeding cameras. And, um, we heard, we heard people indicate that, um, they, they never had a ticket before in their entire life. And, and somehow, somehow they, they were, they were, um, they were caught breaking the law when they didn't realize they were breaking the law. When I, when I went to court for the ticket that I got, I heard more of the same stories. And so I, I am inclined to think that a diversion program should be not just for new drivers, not just for young drivers, um, but for any driver who has not received a ticket before as a, as a first offense. I, I don't think we should be putting, putting an age on, on any kind of leniency that we're giving, um, a first-time offender. First-time offenders should be able to receive the same, the same leniency as any other first-time offender and not, not have their age be affected, uh, have their age be the, the determining factor of whether they can get the same leniency as the person sitting next to them who received the same ticket. Thank you.
Counselor Newton?
Yeah, um, my goal, I'll let you know, it's really simple, fairness. That's what it should be. I, I don't know why we have a age limit of 25 years. That seems kind of arbitrary. It should be, it seems almost like age discrimination. If like, you're someone over 65, 75, it's your very first ticket. I just think it should be fair. Remove the age limit.
Counselor Van Dremelin?
As, as the person who made that motion, I apologize that my intent wasn't clear enough. I don't want to change anything about the existing diversion program. I want it codified, because I learned that it's not in the Albany Municipal Code. It's just a policy that's been set by the judge. And I want no age requirement. Like, that's, it, it, it was literally as simple as that was, was my intention in making that motion. I'd like to see an ordinance to that effect, so this is codified, so that, you know, we have judicial changes in the future, that it's not just subject to what one judge or another feels like, that it's, this is a consistent program for Albany, and everybody's treated the same.
Counselor Thompson?
I'm nodding my head in agreement. Well said by both Counselor Newton and Counselor Van Dremelin. Very straightforward. Thank you.
Counselor Smith?
I don't think it's necessary. We have laws that apply to speeding and any other behavior when you're driving a car. People who have been driving for 40, 50, 60 years know what the law is. When they get caught, they should go to court like anybody else. I just don't think it's necessary.
Do you have an opinion about it either way? I just don't.
I feel that I have to not say anything about this because the people I serve outside of here are the ones getting some of those tickets, so I'll just reserve my comments.
And I, I wanted to mention, it wasn't for all, uh, you know, Class C or, I can't remember the classes again. It was for if you're going just like over, I think it was 21 miles over. It wasn't like, if you're going like 100 miles an hour over.
Isn't it C and D?
Yeah.
Whatever the lowest to.
It was the lowest two, which the lowest one wouldn't even be triggered on a red light ticket.
Because that's, that's Because that's, that's what it is now, right?
Yes.
Okay.
So it wouldn't be like the extreme speeding. It's just like, I believe it was, I think it was 21. Attorney Sean Kidd, do you recall what the classes were?
So, most of them, I believe, are, that I, in September can clarify, I think most of the tickets that they get in municipal court are C violations, which is, I think it's 20, is that 20 over?
Yeah, so a C violation is 11 to 20 over the speed limit. So in a neighborhood, would be 45 or...
And if they get, if they're going 100 miles an hour in a 20 mile an hour zone, that's also considered reckless driving, which is a crime. And they should be cited for criminal offense at that point.
And we're only suggesting this for Class C violations, not for every single one, I think, just for the red light cameras.
Okay, so I just want clarifying questions. Just, I wanna make sure we're all on the same page. So you, you mentioned that you want this for all first-time offenders. But now I'm hearing that maybe just for specific violations and maybe specifically for photo notice violations.
I, I was, I was speaking of first-time offenders for the Class C violations.
Okay.
Yeah, because again, as the person who made the motion, like, the existing, like, the motion was for the existing diversion program to stay the same, be codified in the Albany Municipal Code, but sands the, it sands the age limit.
That is also my position.
Okay, so our...
That's the motion that was made.
First-time offenders, that's what I'm hearing.
First-time offenders. So our existing diversion program doesn't limit to Class C violations. It's any moving violation, so...
So it's just, so it'll be just the age limit, then?
It's, if we just do the age limit, then it's all moving violations. I just wanna make sure we're, we're on the same page on this.
Well, that does make, that makes a difference.
Yeah. So, yeah. Is it all violations?
Counselor Smith?
I would say it might be easier to make it the all moving, any, any moving violation. And it's, you don't get a one-time get-out-of-jail-free card, so to speak, for each one. If you, if you have an offense, if you get a D violation, because you're going whatever, I mean, it's the $105, $110 ticket, and you wanna, and you wanna go to traffic school, that's your one time. You get a C violation, and next time, you've already used it, right? If you get a C and it's your first one, then that's it. If you get, if you get, again, if you're getting an A viola, or anything like these examples, we're getting where somebody's going, you know, if they're saying 80 miles an hour and a 20, or 100 miles an hour and a 20. Or I think when the police were talking about this, they said they had somebody going 130 miles an hour down that road when it was a 40. That's reckless driving. If that's, if that's gonna be cited as a criminal offense, and technically, if they have no criminal record, they could be eligible for diversion in that, unless they have a CDL, and then they're not. But, but that doesn't mean I have to give it to them. I mean, if, if somebody's going, I mean, as the city prosecutor, if someone's going 120 miles an hour in a school zone during the school day, I'm not gonna give them diversion. I'm just, I can't do it. Because that's reckless driving, and they shouldn't have a driver's license. But I think what might make it easier is just if it's any moving violation. So if it's a violation and not a crime, so that we're clear on that. So, and that's what your, your program is now, right? It's, it's a diversion eligible or traffic school for a moving violation. Is that right? So as Christopher was saying, we'll, we'll do it for the same as it is now, just remove the age limit.
Is that what I'm understanding?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, okay, so we're not changing laws or different things. Yeah, it's just gonna be whatever the judge is doing now, just removing the age limit.
Okay.
So September, so I'm clear, so you get diversion once. Does that understand?
Well... In Oregon, there's no way to track how many times you've had a diversion.
I mean, the city of Albany.
Only in, only in the city of Albany.
Okay, that's what I thought.
You could have 20 diversion programs throughout the state.
But if they're here, only one.
We wouldn't know about it. We'd just know if you got one here.
Okay. Counselor...
I was just in state, that's how the city, so, I think I've mentioned this before. My husband works for the city of Salem's Municipal Department. I know that they use, like, I think it's Red Flex. And that also tracks who's received, who's done the diversion, or if they don't, don't complete it, and it charges them, I don't know. But yeah, and I asked him, I was like, oh, well, what if people get it? In other cities, he goes, we only care about our city. And usually, it's people that are gonna get the ticket live in your city. People that are passing by and getting the ticket, they aren't gonna try to get, they aren't gonna come down to the court and be like, hey, I wanna do diversion. They aren't gonna come back, they don't, so...
They're gonna pay it.
It's, it's doing goodwill for our residents.
Matt, you have something?
No.
Got a question?
How much of the state traffic code is spelled out separately in our municipal code?
There are no traffic violations in our municipal code, so this would...
What I thought.
Yeah.
I think we need to respect the independence clause in the judge's contract. She knows this stuff.
I agree.
We don't. And I don't wanna, I don't, I just don't see any need for this.
Okay.
At all.
I, I do have something. You know, that independence clause certainly sounds to me like, hey, legislative side, once again, we are at the legislative side. Hey, don't tell the judge, don't influence the judge to do something that's not by the book. That's what that, that clause sends to me. I could be wrong, but I'll get back to you regardless of that. I'll say it again, we are the legislative body, and we can put things down in code, and we should put things down on code if we believe it's to the betterment of the city. And then make it very clear, and the judge will respect that. And I don't think any of us would tell the judge to do something not by ORS, but I'll leave that.
And I wanna reiterate, I did talk to the judge about this. I said, hey, are you amendable to this kind of change? And she says, whatever you guys wanna do, I'm, I'll make it work, I'll figure it out. I was in a phone conversation...
Well, I'd like to hear that from her.
Yeah, I believe she, when they brought this up a few weeks ago...
She cannot take a position on this, one way or the other. She would be happy to explain to you why we do it the way we do it now, but she cannot take a position.
She said whatever, whatever we decide is what she will implement. It is our duty as a legislative branch to set those parameters.
Okay, so all violations, not just C and D, or just photo notice, just the age. And I just wanna make sure we're working towards the same thing in the end, this diversion program. I mean, are we just wanting to give people a warning type, or is education important? What, what do we want people to get from this diversion program?
What are they getting now? I mean, what's being provided now? What are they getting now? And to be clear, like I said, I don't really have an opinion on it at all. It doesn't matter. I feel like if we hired a judge, we hired her to do her, to do the job that she's been doing. But, or not but, and what are they getting from the diversion program now? I think that they would, that's what, whatever they're getting now is what they'll continue to get, at least from my understanding. I don't think it's gonna be anything newer. However, again, I'm not, it doesn't really, I don't really have that, I'm not strong feelings on either part of it. If it's been working, it's been working, that's fine. But if the age is, seems to be a hindrance for our residents, then I do wanna do the due diligence regarding that. But whatever they're getting now, I think they're gonna continue to get that. I don't think it's gonna be anything more, unless it's like a, I don't know, the education piece, like a slap on the wrist, like, don't do it again type of thing.
Is there an education component to this? Well, let me, so your attorney, please let us know what's up.
So, right now, if you are eligible for a so-called traffic diversion, and you can go to traffic school, there's different programs out there. A lot of cities use what's called U-turn 180, and it's a, it's a program you get on the internet, and you have to sign up for it. And it's kind of a re-education of traffic laws and things like that, so that you, you know, get to, so there's an education component to it, yes. I, you know, I've never taken it, so I can't tell you that it changed behavior. I think probably paying the price of the course and still having to pay money to the city is probably more of a deterrent than taking the course. But there is an education component to it, there's supposed to be anyway, so...
So if a person doesn't complete the course, what's, what happens?
If they don't complete the course, they don't get, they don't get credit for the, for taking it. And so then, the, the ticket is still on, goes on their record. So the, taking the course keeps it off of their record and keeps their insurance rates from going up and things like that, so...
As someone who got a ticket when I was living in Chicago for the first time, I did take the online driving school. You have to get an 80%. They give you a certain amount of months to get it done. I did it. Did I ever get another ticket? No. Do I have a perfect driving record? Yes. Did my insurance go up? Yes, still. So, I'm not, you know, I don't, you know, just as they say, when I ask about my insurance, why is it going up? And to them, well, it's the economy, and there's trends, and da-da-da-da-da. So as someone who did a diversion program, I guess you will, it was beneficial, I did, like, for me, but I'm also an educator. Some people don't care, they just wanna get it done, and you click, click, click till you get it done, and pay your money, and that's the end of it.
Can I correct what I said? I wrongly, incorrectly stated the program that they're using in Salem is Red Flex, but I misspoke it as the U-turn 180.
So, council, what do you wanna do?
I'm, I'm... Mr. Mayor, you don't have to make a decision. I think, unless September has some more questions.
I do have some more questions. So we talk, you know, we want this to be fair. And when we're saying fair, are we talking about fair to the violators, fair to the community, fair to victims? Who are we, who are we including in this?
I wanna remove the age discrimination is the goal. So if you're under 25, you're 25 or younger, and you're able to get the diversion, I think that it should also apply if you're 105, and it's your very first violation.
Counselor Van Drumellem?
Agreed. My, my sole goal was to remove the age cap, just to reiterate, not to change anything else about the program, or do away with diversion entirely. I mean, the, like, the goal, the goal is accomplished either way. I would prefer to see folks have one opportunity at diversion regardless of age, that would be my preference. But there, there are other ways to accomplish what's on my mind. I don't think that they're as favorable to the community, but that's where I'm at.
Beat this call, I think we beat this up enough. Counselor McLeod?
Thank you. I, I do like the, the education program component of this. I think that education is, as we, as we know, is useful to, to people under 25. I think that as, I think that we all know that education is useful at any age. It, it could be, it could be useful to someone who is 30, 50, 70, 100. If you want to re-educate yourself and do better, you should have that opportunity, no matter what your age is. And so I think that the, the education component is important. It's important that we make that available to, to people of all ages.
Also, I think if I remember correctly from the last meeting, workload was a concern. Is that something we still wanna consider as we're looking at this?
Didn't we hire a new, a new position for the court already?
We did hire a new position to help with the increase from the photo notice cameras. So we have that, that position. A diversion program would greatly increase our workload. So, I mean, right now, with the North Albany camera, we're, we're doing okay. We have the Gary and Sannie M just went live a couple weeks ago. We haven't really seen results from that yet. And then Queen and Elm will be going live beginning of October, so we don't know what that's gonna look like. I think we have room in our budget for another position if needed, for, if that is more work than what we were expecting. But if we could, if we can manage with what the FTE we have now, I don't, I don't wanna take, take an FTE from another general fund position that could be used, so...
So September, I think we have, we have enough with which to create an ordinance, and we'll bring that back, and we can address workload issues at that point, too, when it's more fleshed out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you for your input. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Gina. Director?
Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. I have nothing further.
Okay, with that, I am gonna do you the honor of adjourning the meeting. Our next meeting is going to be Monday, September 22nd at 4:00 PM for a work session. Wednesday, September 24th at 6:00 PM for a general meeting. And with that, I'll adjour the meeting.